Morning, everybody. We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Roll call.
McCoy.
Here.
Brownell.
Here.
Conley.
Here.
Van Ork. Hockins Smith.
Here. Action on this previous meeting?
I'll move it. Second.
Roll call.
McCoy.
Here.
Brownell.
Yes.
Yes.
Conley.
Yes.
Van Ork.
Yes.
Hockins Smith.
Yes. Any special claims?
None.
Action on the bills as submitted by the county auditor. Roll call.
McCoy.
Yes.
Brownell. Conley.
Yes.
Van Ork.
Yes.
Hockins Smith.
Yes.
Okay, June 2023 is Pride Month. We have a proclamation today. Supervisor McCoy, you can read the proclamation for us.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Whereas LGBTQ Pride Month is celebrated annually in June to honor the 1969 Stonewall riots and works to achieve equal justice and equal opportunity for LGBTQ Americans. And whereas LGBTQ pride is often defined as the positive stance against discrimination, violence, and hatred too many people still experience today that fosters self-affirmation, dignity, visibility, and social community while encouraging celebration of diversity, all of which support ongoing struggles for equal rights of LGBTQ people and their families. And whereas cities around our country, state, and nation, and globe honor LGBTQ Pride Month with parades, festivals, community days, proclamations, and other public recognitions, which especially highlight the wide range of contributions that the LGBTQ community and LGBTQ-owned businesses and LGBTQ public servants make to their economies, communities, nations. And whereas Polk County is strengthened by and strives upon the rich diversity of its people, all of which contribute to the vibrant character of the county, now therefore be it resolved that we Polk County Board of Supervisors do hereby proclaim June 2023 to be Pride Month in Polk County and encourage all residents to recognize and celebrate our great diversity by taking part in community events throughout June which focus on and celebrate our LGBTQ neighbors. Signed this day, 30th of May, 2023. Tom Hockins Smith.
Next Supervisor. We want to get a quick photo. Where are we at with that? Okay, we got it? Matt, you have the original proclamation.
Yeah. This is Dan Jansen from Penne Pride and Damian Thompson from Iowa Safe Schools.
All right. Am I in order? Excellent. Damian Thompson, 1669 Beaver Avenue, Des Moines, Iowa, 50310. I didn't prepare marks, but I'll keep it brief nonetheless. Thank you Supervisors for this critical proclamation. I know every year we come around to June and Pride Month and have a fun celebration and get to recognize and celebrate the great diversity we have in Polk County. But I think it's particularly poignant this year with the relentless attacks on the LGBTQ community, not only in our State House, but frankly around the country. As Iowa Safe Schools, the organization I represent, we lobby at the state and federal level for LGBTQ youth who have been particularly targeted in our schools and communities. And so for them to see local leaders supporting them is crucially important for their mental health and their own student success. So I thank you for that and appreciate the invite today.
Thanks.
Dan Jansen, Board Chair for Capital City Pride. I also thank you for this proclamation. I think the most relevant thing is creating safe spaces for the LGBTQ plus community. And I always say visibility is education. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I think our next item up, public hearing, Becky.
Number six, public hearing, resolution amending the fiscal year 2223 budget.
Is proof publication on file?
Yes.
Is anyone here to speak for or against? Anyone here to speak for or against? See none? Close the hearing. Come back to board for a motion.
Move the resolution, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Roll call.
McCoy.
Yes.
Brownell.
Yes.
Conley.
Yes.
Van Ork.
Yes.
Hockins Smith.
Yes. Number seven, public hearing, Becky.
Number seven, resolution approving quick claim deed for vacant parcel at 3308 Lincoln Avenue.
Is proof publication on file?
Yes.
Anyone here to speak for or against? Anyone speak for or against? See none? Close the hearing. Entertain a motion.
I'll move it. Second.
Roll call.
McCoy.
Yes.
Brownell.
Yes.
Conley.
Yes.
Van Ork.
Yes.
Hockins Smith.
Yes. Now, this becomes a little bit more complicated as we don't do this very often. But we need to convene as Polk County Board of Health. So I don't think we need to close this. Can, do we, Ralph, can we just take a roll call as the Board of Health?
I think it would be appropriate just to take a short pause as the Board of Supervisors and then convene as the Board of Health.
Maybe move that, formally move that, take a short pause?
Yes.
I'll move that.
Second.
Roll call.
McCoy.
Yes.
Brownell.
Yes.
Conley.
Yes.
Van Ork.
Yes.
Hockins Smith.
Yes. And now we could take a roll call for the Public Health Board?
Motion.
A motion to convene as Public Board of Health.
I'll make a motion to convene the Public Board of Health.
Second.
Roll call.
McCoy.
Yes.
Brownell.
Yes.
Conley.
Yes.
Van Ork.
Yes.
Hockins Smith.
Yes. And the public hearing is a resolution adopting amendments to Health Rules, Chapter 4, Air Pollution, and directing publications. Proof publication on file?
Yes.
Is anyone here to speak on this matter? Anyone here to speak on this matter? Step up the podium, name and address for the record, please.
I'm Jennifer Bradley with Polk County Public Works Air Quality Division. I'm here to answer any questions about this.
I did have a couple, Tom. I think this is, the reason this is on the agenda, I think, is due to legislative action in the last session, if I'm not mistaken, directed mostly at Polk County and Lynn County. And I'm wondering what the difference between then and now is. What's the change, I guess is my question.
Well, this revision is actually, it's standard revision we do. It's been five years since we have amended our regulations. These are standard regulations that we do to be consistent with the Iowa State Code. This has been in the works for a while. We have not made any revisions based on what's going on in the legislation currently. That will be done at a later time. So we haven't done anything in response to that.
So this has nothing to do with that?
This has nothing to do with that.
Good. Thank you.
Okay.
I wanted to know.
Okay.
I'll move the new amendment to Chapter 5, Air Pollution.
We need to close the public hearing first.
Okay, if there's no other comments, I believe there is, entertain a motion. I close the hearing, entertain a motion.
Okay, I'll move the amendment to Chapter 5, Air Pollution.
I'll second it.
Roll call.
McCoy.
Yes.
Brownell.
Yes.
Conley.
Yes.
Van Ork.
Yes.
Hockins Smith.
Yes. Now we just need a motion to adjourn as a Board of Health. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Roll call.
McCoy.
Yes.
Brownell.
Yes.
Conley.
Yes.
Van Ork. Hockins Smith.
Yes. Now...
I'll move to go back into session, I guess.
Okay, I'll second. Roll call.
McCoy.
Yes.
Brownell.
Yes.
Conley.
Yes.
Van Ork. Hockins Smith.
Yes. Now Becky, it shows we have, we vote again on this, on this public hearing? We come back to...
No, we're going.
We're done?
Yeah.
We move on to public comments? Are we good? Dominic?
Now you have to vote as the actual Board of Supervisors.
As Board of Supervisors, okay. Board of Health first, then the Board of Supervisors.
That's correct. That's per code.
Okay, okay.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Roll call.
McCoy.
Yes.
Brownell.
Yes.
Conley.
Yes.
Van Ork.
Yes.
Hockins Smith.
Yes. Now, we can move on to public comments. Is anyone here for public comments this morning? Sheriff Snyder.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Kevin Schneider, Polk County Sheriff. I just wanted to take a minute to thank the Board publicly. You'll notice there's a resolution coming down today supporting an agreement with the Dallas Center Grimes School District for a school resource officer. That's been the project we have been working with Supervisor Brownell on for many years. And it went through the process that we actually brought their superintendent, who was quite concerned about it originally. We brought them out, we put them in a new simulator, let them go through some of the training that the officers go through, let them see that we're not going to be there to be the school bad guy and pick on all the students. That basically they'll be providing counseling, full-service situations, situations where schools and children that may be struggling with getting food or clothing, their school resource officer is their resource for that. So on a five to nothing vote last week, we were proud to say that every community that we provide law enforcement for as the sheriff's office now has a school resource officer and couldn't do it without your help. So thank you very much.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. That was, it's been a great thing. And we haven't worked on this a long time. And so it's great. It looks like, and I know Frank's back there, but it looks like the revenue or the agreement we have is pretty similar to the North Polk agreement, or is that fairly accurate?
That's correct.
All right.
We're still doing a bond grant too, aren't we, Kevin?
Yes, sir. So Bond Grant, North Polk, I'll draw them in the health card, you know, and also you have Taliesin or kind of.
We had Southeast Polk until the Pleasantland annexed them, right?
That is correct.
Okay. Perfect. Okay. Great, thanks.
Congratulations.
Okay. Move on to permits, Becky.
10 and 11 are renewal applications for Class E retail alcohol license for Quick Trip at 4575 Northwest 2nd and 4801 Northeast 14th Street. Number 12, renewal application for Class E retail alcohol license with outdoor service area permit for Club Celebrity 1510 Northeast Broadway Avenue.
Roll call.
McCoy.
Yes.
Brownell.
Yes.
Conley.
Yes.
Van Ork.
Yes.
Hockins Smith.
Yes.
Resolutions. Number 13, resolution authorizing the auditor's office to publish a notice of public hearing for June 13th on disposal of county interest in real estate. Number 14, resolution authorizing the auditor's office to publish a notice of public hearing for June 13th on disposal of county interest in real estate. Number 15, resolution approving easement contracts for the 2023 sanitary sewer project. Number 16, resolution approving reimbursement for property owner at 4560 Northeast 38th Street for relocation of two septic system laterals. Number 17, resolution approving cooperative public service agreement with City of Alamon. Number 18, resolution approving cooperative public service agreement with City of Johnston. Number 19, resolution approving weatherization contract. Number 20, resolution approving final plat of McCauley Estates, Plat 2.
I'll move those collectively.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
McCoy.
Yes.
Brownell.
Yes.
Conley. Van Ork.
Yes.
Hockins Smith.
Yes.
Number 21, resolution approving integration of the Refugee Alliance of Central Iowa as a program with CFYS. Number 22, resolution approving memorandum of understanding with Heartland Area Education Agency 11 to meet requirements of Federal Healthy Kids Act legislation. Number 23, resolution approving facility service agreement and business associate agreement with Heartland Area Education Agency 11 for shelter care educational program at the Juvenile Detention Center. Number 24, resolution approving agreement for services with Wesley Life for catered congregant meals. Number 25, resolution approving agreement with the Polk County Housing Trust Fund to administer and distribute U.S. Treasury Department Emergency Rent Assistance Program funds for affordable housing.
I'll move those collectively with Chairman.
Second. Discussion.
I'd like, yeah, go ahead. I have a question, too.
Okay. I must respect the number 21, and I've got a question on number 25, too. But number 21, just a comment, I guess. This is a great thing we're doing here, I think, that it's going to give stability to the Refugee Alliance of Central Iowa, I think, and really be a positive step for them. And I think it really illustrates the county's support and commitment towards refugees and immigrants in this area. So congratulations to you, Eric, for getting that set up. And I know you're looking for more to do. So this is, I'm saying it jokingly, but this is, I think, just a terrific thing we're doing here.
Eric, on that note, I questioned it last week because I didn't really know we were doing that yet because we haven't hired the director or the person that's going to be above this person.
That's right. We thought we had someone and...
Exactly. So I thought we were kind of rushing the gun here on this. I wasn't, I'm still not confident that we should have hired this person yet. I'm not sure what that person's going to be doing, other than, I guess, exactly what she's been doing. I thought the state has been using this person, and I don't want to duplicate the services the state's doing. I understand we need, you know, to do something for our refugees and immigrants. That's why we're doing something with the Welcome Center, but we haven't hired the lead person yet.
Right. That's right. And to be clear, we could certainly put this resolution off for a couple of weeks or a month if we needed to. The thought was a clean break as of July, then we could transfer remaining funds from Oak Ridge. And you are correct that the director would continue to pursue the objectives and the goals that the executive committee has already established, which is supporting the local ECBOs and helping promote the value and needs of refugees and the various refugee organizations. That we think would continue. Right now, that is a 30-hour-a-week position. This would make it a 40-hour week. The state would like to engage in a contract with us to have 10 hours to help this person develop similar organizations around the state, as well as some statewide activities related to World Refugee Day and the Refugee Summit. But we certainly could hold on this. We were just looking at that July break. And as you'd mentioned, we thought we had someone on board as the director. So that threw a wrench in it.
Well, I'm not crazy about working with the state of Iowa for anything right this moment.
Okay.
I understand why you want to pursue this, but to work with the state on this issue, I'm not crazy to do. But if you want, if you think that we have enough work for this person to do, I'm game to do it, but I'm hesitant.
I think, I think we do right now. This position is not really officially helping the state. So we would still be getting the same number of hours out of the coordinator position as we are now. So those activities would remain the same. The increase in number of hours would be the part that goes to the state. And we have talked to them even recently. Joy's been working on this herself. They'll match us 25%. They're also going to transfer some additional funds to support single events such as the World Refugee Day and Refugee Summit in an amount that I believe will be, as it ends up significantly higher than what I put on the board memo. But we can proceed today or we can pause, and either way is fine, really.
Well, I'm in favor of proceeding. I think the break on fiscal year makes some sense to me. It probably makes some sense for Oak Ridge, too. So I think that may, I mean, we're going to do this anyway, so.
I'm fine with moving forward. I'm just not excited about it.
Okay. Anything else?
25. I'd like to talk about 25, I guess.
Okay.
You go first this time.
The Treasury money. Can you explain all this to us?
Yes. So emergency rent assistance money was put out in two different pieces of legislation. And there's ERA 1 and then ERA 2, which is under the American Rescue Plan. ERA 1 is over. We spent $66.75 million. That closed in December. We helped 11,600 unique households. 43% were under 30% AMI. 49% were under 50% AMI. That's out the door. That was just emergency rent assistance. Under the American Rescue Plan, ERA 2 program, we have now been awarded $62 million. We had an initial tranche of six and a half back in '21. That was spent many, almost two years ago now. And so the remaining, the new funds we have, which is about $62 million, we have awarded $46.5 million to Impact, consistent with a prior agreement, to do emergency rent assistance. But this legislation is unique in that it allows for spending up to 25% on the construction, rehabilitation, or preservation of affordable housing.
Okay, so we did get that in there. 25% of it gets to go to new development.
That's correct. It's not purchasing. There's a weird language that allows you to, it doesn't include purchasing, but deconstruction, rehabilitation, or preservation. And so that 25% of the cumulative allocation is whatever, it was 15-point-something million, which is in this resolution. So Eric Bernmester's in the room back here. And of course, he knows far more about this than I do, but we've had several meetings, including a longer meeting last week. And with the help of the county attorney's office, who really expedited this agreement, we feel like we're in a good place to set aside and obligate that money because we can't spend any of it until the 75% we've obligated to Impact is completely obligated to individual participants, which we think will be probably mid-2024. So that gives us a small window to act on housing. This gives them time to queue up some projects.
Okay, so the question I have is, you know, a while ago, we talked about strings being attached.
Right.
Are there any strings attached to this?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, there are strings such...
Okay, so one of the things we talked about was, how many times have they got rent assistance?
Oh, for the rent assistance part?
Rent assistance.
Okay, I apologize. Yeah, so some people have timed out. That doesn't change. People who have already exceeded or met the 18-months duration cumulative, they are timed out, can't get any more assistance.
Okay.
The legislation does not allow us to put additional obligations on applicants, such as work requirements and case management, but we can offer that. And that's what we're going to do with every participant. We're going to offer them, you know, if they want multiple rounds of assistance, we're going to ask them to participate in light case management. And that includes things such as doing a housing stability analysis, where we say, we can help you, but long-term, this is not a sustainable housing based on the income that you have. So let's look at finding a place for you. Let's work with case managers that are experts in housing. Let's find you a place to go where you can sustain once your assistance is over, and then let's help you make that transition. Because the goal isn't that this is the solution. It's just a bridge. So we are looking at doing that. Financial assistance, you know, the Financial Empowerment Center offers free financial counseling, really pushing people to utilize that. Workforce programs and other, you know, really unique services, unique to the individual households, to help this actually have long-term benefit, not just temporary assistance.
Okay, good. That's what I was hoping for.
That's great.
I'm done with those questions. Up to you now, Bob.
Well, my questions are more macro, I guess, and you've answered most of them already. So I'll just kind of leave it at that. I think you've done a good job outlining it. And I see Eric sitting there behind you. If he wants to offer a few comments, that's cool.
Eric Bernmester, Polk County Housing Trust, on 550 Fifth Avenue, Des Moines. Thank you for the opportunity and thanks, Eric Cool, for working so hard to bring this additional money into Polk County. So what Eric didn't explain to you is that, if you'll remember, not so long ago, the governor gave back $89 million of Iowa housing money to the Treasury. Well, guess what? You guys got a bunch of it back. And so, and that's what this is. This is that ERA 2 money. Eric and I have talked about how we might best, how we might best allocate these dollars in Polk County because it is different than the state and local fiscal relief funds that you allocated about $15 million to a year ago. This does have some additional restrictions on how we can use it, but I do believe that there is a need, particularly in the area of rehabilitation of multifamily housing in Polk County, that this money can be specifically used for. And so the plan is that the trust fund begin to queue up projects. Remember, we can't allocate or spend any of this until 75% of the rental assistance money has been allocated to individual clients, which could be, you know, as long as, you know, eight to 10 months. But we can be queuing up projects in those, in that period of time and sending out requests for proposals to multifamily projects in Polk County to determine what sort of capital needs they have in order to improve their properties, but most importantly, to extend the affordability period of those properties beyond their natural expiration. Remember that our federal programs don't require permanent affordability. All of those expire at some point in time. This is a way for us to begin to talk to those owners about how we extend their affordability in exchange for dollars that can improve the properties, not only for the neighborhoods, but also for the tenants. So again, thanks a lot. It will be interesting to see as we go forward how this works, but never let it be said that Bernmester can't find a way to spend $15 million in affordable housing money.
Eric, if I could use that quickly. So, and there's the breakdown, 25% breakdown was new construction and rehabilitation and something else. What was the third thing, Eric?
Preservation.
Okay, preservation. So I just think that when you're talking about rehabilitation, these multifamily units, it falls right into a lot of the stuff we're already doing, whether it's, you know, the city of Des Moines and their Ion project, or whether it's Invest DSM and the things that we're doing in neighborhoods, most of them were single-family homes. But, you know, how you have just a mixture of some of these multifamily units in all neighborhoods, that probably could be upgraded and used a lot longer and be, yeah, be, you do neighborhood rehabilitation at the same time.
Yeah. I call this owner-occupied repair for multifamily.
Perfect.
Now, Eric, well, this, for instance, you know, the project that ANOM's doing, well, trying to get off the ground if they could get their approval, that on Merle Hay Road.
Sure. Monarch?
Monarch. Will we be able to do more projects like this with that money?
Absolutely. One of the things that make, is going to make this a little tougher than the state and local fiscal recovery funds that you allocated a year ago is that it has a shorter timeline.
Yeah.
So we need to get this money spent by December of 2025, not December of 2026. And so the challenge is going to be finding projects, not only that are ready to go, but that aren't going to require two years of construction. So in all likelihood, I would be misleading you if I were to tell you that we're going to be able to build greenfield projects with this money. We're not. There's just simply not enough time. And so what we're going to be doing is we're going to be looking for projects that meet the timeline, but also meet the requirements of the either construction, rehabilitation, or preservation of affordable housing. So don't look for as many new units with this money as you might, as we might and have been looking for with the, what I call the SLRf money. But do know that there are plenty of projects out there that need help, that we can find ways to extend their affordability beyond what the developers have promised, and also improve the quality of the project for tenants.
Perfect.
Thank you, Eric.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks, Eric.
Roll call.
McCoy.
Yes.
Brownell.
Yes.
Conley.
Yes.
Van Ork.
Yes.
Hockins Smith.
Yes.
26, resolution approving updated fees for clinical services at the Polk County Health Department. Number 27, resolution approving subordination agreement regarding a property subject to declining mortgage in the lead hazard remediation program. Number 28, resolution approving agreement for services and business associate agreement with Wesley Life to provide public health nursing and home care aid services. 29 and 30 are resolutions approving agreements with Fab Rehab to address lead hazard repairs at 1420 Henderson and 605 10th Street. 31 through 33 are resolutions approving agreements with Richmond Construction to address lead hazard repairs at 1203 Burlington Terrace, 826 East 25th Court, and 2301 Capitol.
I'll move those collectively.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
McCoy.
Yes.
Brownell.
Yes.
Conley.
Yes.
Yes.
Van Ork.
Yes.
Hockins Smith.
Yes.
Number thirty-four, resolution creating position within community, family, and youth services. Number thirty-five, resolution reclassifying position within the county attorney's office. Number thirty-six, resolution creating position within the general services department.
I'll move those.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
McCoy.
Yes.
Brownell. Conley.
Yes.
Van Ork.
Yes.
Hockins Smith.
Yes.
Number thirty-seven, resolution approving twenty-eighty agreement with Dallas Center Grimes Community School District for law enforcement services and a school resource officer.
Move a resolution.
Second. Roll call.
McCoy.
Yes.
Brownell.
Yes.
Conley.
Yes.
Van Ork.
Yes.
Hockins Smith.
Yes.
Number thirty-eight, resolution approving May two thousand twenty-three manufactured home abatements. Number thirty-nine, resolution approving provider participation agreement with Iowa Finance Authority for the Iowa Home Owner Assistance Fund Program.
I'll move those. Second. Discussion. Roll call.
McCoy.
Yes.
Brownell.
Yes.
Conley.
Yes.
Van Ork.
Yes.
Hockins Smith.
Yes.
Number forty, resolution authorizing settlement of a civil complaint.
Move a resolution.
Second.
Roll call.
McCoy.
Yes.
Brownell.
Yes.
Conley.
Yes.
Van Ork.
Yes.
Hockins Smith.
Yes.
Number forty-one, resolution accepting a sports tourism grant for the RagBrite Overnight Stop in Greater Des Moines.
Second. Discussion. Roll call.
McCoy.
Yes.
Brownell.
Yes.
Conley. Van Ork.
Yes.
Hockins Smith.
Yes.
Number forty-two, resolution authorizing the closing of Wells Fargo parking lot at the northeast corner of Southwest Sixth and Vine Street.
Move.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
McCoy.
Yes.
Brownell. Conley.
Yes.
Van Ork.
Yes.
Hockins Smith.
Yes.
Number forty-three, resolution approving attorney fee agreement with Brown Winnick.
Move a resolution.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
McCoy.
Yes.
Brownell.
Yes.
Conley.
Yes.
Van Ork.
Yes.
Hockins Smith.
Yes.
Number forty-four, resolution approving application for federal highway administrators charging and fueling infrastructure discretionary grant program funding and committing to matching funds.
Second. Under discussion, I see Allison coming here. Allison, can you step up to a couple, like, just fill the board in, just briefly on what you're doing at the NPO level and working with our office?
Yep, so working with Polk County's, uh, multiple staff on this. So, the whole region is putting in a charging and fueling infrastructure grant to the federal highway. That will be due June thirteenth, and so this resolution is just committing, uh, the locations for Polk County, as well as those matching funds. Later this week, we will have a total. Most of the communities are still passing stuff through, so I don't have a total of how many stations or what dollar amount we'll be asking for. But this will be the first of five years of this grant opportunity as well.
Perfect.
Multiple communities are doing the same thing we're doing?
So, Polk County, Des Moines, West Des Moines, Urbendale, Waukegan, I think there's maybe three or four that aren't participating in this one.
Great, thanks, Allison.
Thank you. Roll call.
McCoy.
Yes.
Brownell.
Yes.
Conley.
Yes.
Van Ork.
Yes.
Hockins Smith.
Yes.
Number forty-five, resolution approving community sponsorship awards.
I'll move it.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
McCoy.
Yes.
Brownell.
Yes.
Conley.
Yes.
Van Ork.
Yes.
Hockins Smith.
Yes.
Number forty-six, resolution approving community betterment grant awards.
Second. Discussion. Roll call.
McCoy.
Yes.
Brownell.
Yes.
Conley.
Yes.
Van Ork.
Yes.
Hockins Smith.
Yes.
Communications?
Forty-seven and forty-eight are manure management plan updates from Brookside Farm Site Two in Maxwell and Mud Creek Theaters in Coal Flack, Coal Fax.
Receiving file.
Number forty-nine, notice of appraisal of damages and time for appeal in the matter of the condemnation of certain rights and land for the Southeast Connector Project.
Refer the treasurer and a county attorney.
Number fifty, filing a written decision, City of Bondurant voluntary annexation within the urbanized area of the city of Mitchellville. Number fifty-one, notice of meeting to consider City of Mitchellville voluntary annexation within the urbanized area of the city of Bondurant. Number fifty-two, City of West Des Moines, notice of consultation meeting for the Fuller Road Urban Renewal Plan Amendment Number Four. Number fifty-three, City of West Des Moines, notice of consultation meeting for the University Avenue Corridor Urban Renewal Plan Amendment Number Two. Number fifty-four, City of Altoona, notice of hearing concerning one-hundred percent voluntary annexation.
Refer to Public Works and the county attorney. Are there any budget actions? Memorandum of appointments.
I'll move them.
Second.
Roll call.
McCoy.
Yes.
Brownell.
Yes.
Conley.
Yes.
Van Ork. Hockins Smith.
Yes.